And somebody's clocked here. All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone that's joined us tonight. Go ahead and start with taking a roll call from the council. Councilman Labor here, Councilman White here, Councilman Baird here. And Erin was asked the excuse, Councilman Burris here. Thanks for being here tonight. To get started, we'll go ahead and have, how are you doing?
Good.
We'll have an opening prayer. I am with my, uh, Carolyn, and then if you follow me in the place of allegiance.
Father in heaven, as we gather together in the capacity of the same council, we pray for the spirit of the hearing abundance. We pray that the decisions that will be made will be in the benefit, best interest of the citizens of this great city. We pray that we might be appreciative of the freedoms that we enjoy and the beauty of the area that we live in. We pray for the safety of those who work on behalf of Roosevelt City. Those at work to keep our nation, our city safe. We ask these blessings in the name of our son Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, not a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I almost forgot to mention the note that I have to, this is a regular scheduled meeting. We have made comparisons on the website, state website, on our building, and also with the BBS. I'd like to go over the minutes of last meeting if we could. If everybody could take a look at that and see if there are any corrections or amendments to those. Page one. Page two. And page three. Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve. It's all new. Motion by Councilman White. I'll start with that. By Councilman Baird, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Minutes approved. As is customary with our meetings, now we have a public comment period. Just briefly, anyone from the public can comment for up to three minutes. We'd ask that they come to the front and state your name and address. Is there anyone here that would like to take advantage of that tonight? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move forward. We'd better wait on our public hearings, since they're scheduled at 5:50, so we'll move on to our first item, which is item A. We have K and K sanitation to give us a report on the free cleanup day. Mark, are you gonna take care of that, or?
Well, the guy that was going to, fallen down again.
Thanks for being here, good to find you.
That's the invitation, I guess. We got a copy here of what we've done. Give each one of your own, like that. And, uh, maybe go over a little bit. I'd like to recognize my spouse, Deborah and Brett.
I think this is the first time I've seen her.
Oh, yeah.
This is date night? It's been a frequent occurrence here lately.
Yeah, we're gonna have a wild party. You can go, huddle along here, we figured we huddled off about eighty-six ton. There was eight, two hundred and eighty-seven vehicles showed up out there, flash semi-loads over the landfill. Here we are with wages and twenty hours for battle time. That adds up to fifty-three hundred dollars. Before we go any further, though, I'd just like to say to all of you, thanks for letting us help do this. This year we had, I'm not, but this year we had Duchesne and Unit County combined. And UNO was invited to come to our place, and so was Duchesne County, plus those guys. The whole surrounding, everybody could come over, and we segregated it out as to who come from where.
That's amazing, because we're doing all that work.
Get back to that. But anyway, we talked this morning, Brett, what was, what was supposed to talk and say here? But anyway, for us, what we've done in the past, well, you new guys would know, we've given this back to you. Sometimes we haven't, we've done on song, hopefully, so we don't need no big flashing light. But I think the last year, you went and built a walkway up there.
The bike track.
Yeah. And I think somebody said that, whoop that money or something, come from this. And so, uh, but this year, we'd like to turn it back to you again. We're realizing that we're part of the community, and we enjoy some of the facilities. It was suggested, if there was something that you'd like to spend this money on, maybe we can discuss it for a minute. It was suggested in our roundtable discussion this morning as to fireworks.
Well, first of all, thank you for that. And second, you're on camera, so. But we do appreciate it. We do, that's great, but I didn't realize that that's where the money went last year, is to that bike park. But I know that's been a pretty big hit up there, the park, you know, just right on that. So that donation made a big difference, and we appreciate that.
Well. I don't know, there's some things that we've looked at. Okay, this is part of our town, even though we live out in the country.
Yeah.
We do our business here as much as we can, but our, uh, you know, from year to year to year to year, we have contracts, and we'd like to do what we can to, uh, have a favorite in their sight, I guess, for more contracts to come.
Yeah. Well, I think everybody, and I, and I'll allow whomever to speak if they would like that. I know what you've done for our community has been great, and we are, I appreciate what you've done, and I know we do as a city. And I'm learning that more and more all the time, being in this position, that how much goes into making the city run and making things happen. We take for granted, so I appreciate that service, but I don't know if any of the council would like to.
It's a great American story, where they started the business not knowing what was gonna happen. Not only made a living off of it, but been a great service to our community and many others. I think K and K's been wonderful for our area.
We still want our homes in place. But, uh, thank you. Been a long time getting where we're at. We make a lot of money at the end of the month, and I'll go out.
There's lots of dollars coming in. I don't know how that works.
You said one thing, though, that you don't live in the city, but the city's trying to move out to where you're living, in the country. That's amazing how that's, with the new school and all that, it just really, to me, emphasized how close that all is happening in our area. Changes.
Cut them dick, you know, that's fair enough, the four corners, and this is, have it move, it's already getting closer. I think that's the way it works. I'll tell you what, I, uh, my twenty-five, twenty-six years here across the valley, I guess, it's just an impeccable service. We try.
Appreciate it.
Every once in a while, we get a phone call, they'll say, you missed us, or fuck them this, or fuck them that.
I would, I would remember being missed, so.
I'll tell you, I'm being a contractor, showing up on a road to pay the road and neglecting to let you guys know, doing it on trash days. Your people have helped us actually move the canisters over, and we're able to work together to get them done. No complaints, no anything, we just work together, and it's very few people that will do that. Well, you know, our business has so much to do every day, and we don't go home until that's done. I remember the third or second year we started, that cold winter, Edwin and I had a truck each. And I was up there working, the air company's pickup, what are you doing? My truck won't start. But in the process, he brings the starter up on it, and went to shades, went to Bradshaw's, and they have a starter. It finally, it finally run it. So we jumped on the truck I had, and so we was hurrying. And that truck had a Detroit there, and the shaft that runs through the, runs the mower, it stripped. At about nine thirty, kind of clock in the morning. Down the shade, it didn't have nothing, a shade, so, what, what are we gonna do? He says, call New York, see what they do when they're on strike. But anyway, it's just so happened that, uh, Detroit here and Vernal had what we needed, we got it back together. It was about eight-thirty that night, but we got it on down. I remember that they pretty well.
What year was it? Thank you, sir.
We started in seventy-seven, November the one, seventy-seven. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We certainly appreciate the opportunity of being in service.
Well, we appreciate what you're doing, and again, that donation will make sure you know where it goes.
So I look, we, uh, it'd be great to have it go to where the fireworks, we're getting a program to run the, the new fireworks. We got new equipment, but didn't come with the software we were looking for, so we've just gone out. And that would be a great thing for it to go towards. That would really make a difference to show the tickets there.
Right, at least not have fireworks exploding.
That'd be great. Anyway, if, uh, if that could go there, it'd be great.
Okay, unless you got something better, that's just a thought we had.
Mark, did you do those by hand back then, didn't you?
Yeah.
That's a lot different.
Yeah, Edwin and I took care of all of it by ourselves.
It's pretty amazing, like throwing all those bells, hey, play help.
Tell you what, when we first started, there wasn't a muscle to just hurt.
That's why you didn't have any.
Brett, you want to say that?
No, I, you know, we, as we kept up this morning, we were, uh, just, uh, you know, there's, we enjoy being here, and are working for the city and for the residents. By all means, we understand and realize that we're not perfect. There's things that we need to be doing, that we're not doing, there are avenues that we need to be taking, that we're not taking. I'd be happy to do what we can to sort of be better. But, uh, the VBIC, we, we enjoy helping along with that, and that's just part of what we do. API is not necessarily a city-endorsed thing, but we try to help out there as best we can, you know, and.
You do a lot at the schools when there's big events, with all the different, crack cans a lot, makes a huge difference.
So that they're more of a late stuff, you know, we try to do what we can to be a service without, uh, being a burden anywhere or anything like that, and.
There's not a whole bunch of cans down to the cemetery that's gonna go across the street for the supper, for Moonlight.
Nice. Oh, yeah. That's coming Thursday, isn't it?
Yeah.
They wanted me to be there, and I told them I couldn't.
But anyway, we, we appreciate, we really do.
Well, thanks for being here tonight.
Have you?
Sounds good.
You want to spill your beans on here?
Well, I was just gonna, um, I've been volunteering up to the villa, and since they opened in nine. And I've had, they gave me a little pin for forty-three hundred hours, this is last time. But I love going up there, there's people that don't have anybody come and see them. And it's, it's just a thrill to go up and help out there. I know that isn't with K and K, but.
Well, we appreciate your service wherever it may be. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and if there's a problem, don't hesitate to call.
We'll make sure we call, Brett. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead, I could, yeah, a little bit, time for the top award. Would you like to come on up?
Thank you, good evening, my name's Doug Folsom, I'm the loss prevention manager with the Utah Local Governments Trust. I've been working with Vernal City for, what, on thirteen, all right, I'm sorry, Roosevelt, Roosevelt's tomorrow.
We like Vernal, you can leave their check with.
I think after thirteen years, I'd remember too, so. And I'm here tonight to present the 2017 Trust Accountability Program Award for Roosevelt City. And just to explain real briefly, if any of you, some of you are recognized for prior years, but just to explain, the trust is your insurer. We are a government entity chartered by the state legislature to provide insurance for government entities. In the loss prevention department, of course, our job is to try and help control losses, which has a direct effect on the control of your premium dollars. And several years ago, about five years ago, we started this TAP program, which is a series of best practices. And we were encouraging trust members to implement these best practices for risk management. It's kind of evolved from an attempt to get people, or cities and counties and special service districts implementing these best practices, to now, we're actually using it as part of our underwriting program. And starting this year, we're even scoring the quality of the implementation of each of the best practices among the various members, and using the quality of their performance, or the quality, how well they're implementing these best practices in the underwriting process as well. So, you know, if the better these are done, we see the results in, in our losses and in the control losses. Some areas, we've seen some huge benefits, is in wastewater claims, sewer backups, and things like that, have been greatly impacted by the best practices that we've encouraged. And, um, and we appreciate Roosevelt being a partner with the trust and making sure that these best practices are implemented. In fact, this year, as I went through, and I was grading the implementation of the various best practices here at Roosevelt, the score was actually very high on, there's about eight elements for 2017, six of those I was able to give a top rating score on, and the others were higher than, than the minimum as well. So we really appreciate those kind of efforts. We're seeing good results in, in the losses, in our exposures that we've had so far this year, as well as last year, was an improving year as well. And so we believe that that's all a reflection on staff, managements, you know, commitment to risk management and loss prevention. And we're just happy to be a partner with you, as you're a partner with us. For the city council, we're especially grateful for your support of staff in, in allowing them to make these things a priority, and making sure that they're able to focus the resources that are needed. You know, one of the areas that was really tough was about five years ago, five or six years ago, when we first started to recommend higher frequency for inspection and cleaning of the sewer system. That was kind of a hard pill for a lot of people, or a lot of cities to swallow. Roosevelt was one of the early ones to accept, you know, those, those higher frequencies of cleaning. And we've actually, you know, seen how that's benefited us, not just in the reduction of incidents, but when incidents occur, we're able to have greater protection from liability exposure, because we're able to show that we're being, you know, reasonable and prudent, and not negligent in how we manage that system. And so, again, that's kudos to your staff and how well that they're implementing these best practices and making them a priority. So congratulations, and thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate you coming, and thanks to the staff, I guess, and I'll take this, but this really belongs to all of those that participated to keep us safe and keep us in line with criteria you set. Appreciate all of you guys doing so.
Excellent, thank you. Now you know a little more.
That's great, thank you for your help.
Good job, you too. These guys have all done a lot of work, really, really good. Thank you.
Well, thanks for being a partner in that, and again, thank the staff.
It's our pleasure.
Appreciate it. Okay, should we get on to John's favorite topics? Do you wanna, should we go ahead and start? Martin, you give us a breakdown of the final budget or just an overview, and then we can open it up for questions and comments in the public hearing after. Is that okay?
Already covered it once, so, we're a public hearing, just as he's getting up to it, this has been published on our website. John has reviewed this before with us, and, uh, and it has been on our website for, what is it, six weeks, I think? So we're taking public comment through that period of time. And so the purpose of this is to take the public comment and to eventually, we will look for approval of the budget. And that's kind of what we're looking for. It's June, it's the time for approval for the next, next year's budget, so, anyways, yes.
Just a few points here toward the end, there's an addendum, please. I just wanted to review briefly about the, some of the reopen items. Some of the things that have happened in recent, the last, now, six weeks since the last council meeting, many of those items needed to be adjusted and reopened as well. Some of those include, the baseball association, we passed through revenue for them.
Are you on a certain page?
Sorry, A1. A1. So, toward the end. Sure, I'll page this from the end. Like Brian said, not much has changed as far as the actual proposed 2019, so I just wanted to touch base on the 2018, some of the additional reopen items. The baseball association, we've agreed to pass through the revenue and accept fee payments for the baseball association. And so we've had to up the, the revenue side and also up the expense side equally, on each, on each end, to be able to account for that. Also, you'll notice on eleven thousand dollars for the fire contracts. Recently, about six months into the fiscal year, we have an arrangement with, or an agreement established with the unit county to provide additional fire, or an, an actual agreement with the unit county and Duchesne County and whatnot. So that amount, that adjustment's associated with those fire contracts too. The, I think it was the last council meeting, we talked about the McIntyre agreement to have them help us with grant writing and whatnot. We had, we added that in there, into the admin section, for, for at least the June payment, which is six thousand dollars a month. And so that is also in there with all their respective offsets.
Just so that you're aware, they will be out to visit with the council next, to me, if you see them coming out to visit, to discuss some of the potential. So, it would be an initial meeting.
Any questions on A2, or A1? A2? We're actually receiving some pretty good interest out of the PTIP accounts, and so we have that a little bit too, to, to account for some of that. On the, on the offset, we already talked about the offset with the McIntyre, six thousand dollar payment offset in the county project section. And then we also needed some additional sidewalk match money for the sidewalk project, five thousand. Due to some SEBA bottles in the fire department, we needed some additional ones for that for safety concerns. And so we felt the need to add a bit more in there, the ten thousand, five hundred net effects, everything's balanced that way. Also, I think Mayor had mentioned, um, on, on page eight, three, he wanted to add the wage rate, so the current, the current rate in the, the 2019 proposed rates. So I listed those there on page, the bottom of page eight, three.
Can I speak to that? So this is something we found out also, so we, we will approve those, and so that's part of the transparency, you know, let the public know what the elected officials and the appointed officials make in the city. And so that hasn't been, that we could tell, hadn't been done up to this time, we found that, and decided to do that. There will be a, I think there's an ordinance that we'll have to create as well, that those will, or a resolution that those will be in.
I think there's a point for the budget, isn't there?
Is there an ordinance for the budget?
Yeah, we've worked on that.
Okay.
To put that together, that way this can be an addendum or a, or a, that ordinance, if that works.
Perfect, yep, and that'll be fine, so. And I just wanted people to know what you were talking about.
Okay.
Now it's established, you can know what we make, it's out there, and, oh, he doesn't have it up, but.
I will throw it up on the website too.
Yeah, it's on the website, but we just wanted to make sure that the people knew that, and that it's out there, so.
Good point, so, I should have explained that a little more clearly, sorry about that.
No, that's okay, I just.
On the, the water department section, A3, also part of an addendum, additional meters needed. Went through some additional calculations of depreciation, some additional depreciation there. And then on sanitation, this is just an adjustment for some additional usage there with the K and K. It's all a pass-through anyways, but that's just to make sure, and save some of that. Any questions on page eight, three? Page eight, four? This is the project reopen in 2018. We felt like the, the vehicle needed to be closer to the state market price, to raise that up, up to thirty-eight. That seems to be around a reason, more reasonable price. Also, the Durgan well, the Durgan well rebuild, that was part of the original 2018 fiscal year, budget approved, so we added that back in. Cedar View tie-in and loop, looping the line, thirty thousand, and a storm drain on Lagoon Street to the Holy Pond. Part of that money is going to come from the, the remaining, the 2015 utility improvement project money that's, that's still sitting in the PTIP there. Other than that, uh, on page eight, five, I just felt like you'd, you'd probably want to know where the sales tax, sales tax is trending currently. I brought it up to the end of May, it's, it's still following a similar trend that we, we expected, so, other than that, it's, I'll have.
Was that, was that the reopen?
That was the.
There was no changes to the budget, so the final budget was just the same as it was proposed before.
Okay.
And it's the published, we need to do changes from what has been proposed. So this is the reopen, he's covered the reopens, we'll need to do the public.
The final budget hasn't been necessarily addressed, we'll, we'll do the reopen. We'll go ahead and consider ourselves in that, in open meeting, are there any comments? First of all, from the council, are there any comments or thoughts or questions on the budget reopen for 2017, 2018? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open it up for the public, are there any questions for the public? We'll consider ourselves now in a public hearing. Seeing none, I would entertain, well, consider ourselves out of a public hearing, back into open meeting and would consider a motion to approve.
I'll make that a motion.
The one by Councilman. Perfect. And second by Councilman Labor. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Now the, for the final budget, did you wanna speak to any of that? I know you said that it was what we had previously, um, got to that.
If you look on page two, this is the budget brief. And, uh, this would be the, uh, as far as items, this is what was covered. And, uh, and that would be what we're basically, that was what was approved as, as, uh, budget assumptions in the other one. That's what the budget was built upon. And then at that point, it would continue where we're at. And so there hasn't been any changes. It's been out there for six weeks and it hasn't, it hasn't changed till we're, we're proposing. We're continuing to propose the same, same items. We can go through those real life law.
I think it's, just for the public, maybe briefly, I, I, um, just in the site transparency, is there a way we can set that up?
Well, do you have it on the website?
You know, I can go through the budget brief. Yeah, if you, if you wouldn't mind just doing that for, I mean, if we ask for a public hearing, public comment, it'd be important that they have some, um, idea of.
Right, absolutely.
What it entails. That's okay. That's okay.
Okay, so, I'm gonna read some of this if that works. Okay, make sure I don't miss anything.
And like Ryan said, this is something that's now posted on the website. So if anybody has, uh, the desire to look, they can go right there and watch.
Right, in fact, I just showed you this so that people can see. If you go to rooseveltcity.com and come under our transparency and go to budgets, people have, 2018 revised preliminary, the packet you have should be here. And that's just what I've opened. So, um, at that point, that should be the packet that's in front of you. Uh, this was a little back, but the budget hasn't changed it. So at that point, these are.
If you go to the next page, that's the 2018 reopen.
And this was, the reopen is in the final budget, but it's been posted and that's the.
Thank you for, I put this.
Oh, that's great. Um, so the way we've approached the budget is we go based off assumptions, what we expect revenue to, to do. And so, for example, we, we expect most revenues and applicable funds to increase by two and a half percent. And also the corresponding expenses to increase by one and a half percent. Health insurance, we had, uh, anticipated twenty percent due to the rising of healthcare costs, which, which will suffice with our current healthcare costs. We expect property auto insurance to increase by ten percent. But hold with consistency on that. And also hold with consistency on a two percent increase on COLA. We've included both appointed and employees in that group. We believe that that, that coincides with the Western CPI of, of three point one percent, uh, Western Regional. As far as the general fund is concerned, uh, most revenue is expected to two and a half percent. And that coincides with the, uh, the graph that we had just illustrated, talked about with sales tax. We feel like that's, self-tax expected to incline by five percent through the, of recovering economy. Airport fuel we expect to be down or cut back by twenty percent due to airport rehabilitation instruction project. Expense on the expense side, we expect that to increase by one and a half percent, except the following. We've reallocated or relocated, um, UBIC monies. The seventy-six hundred for UBIC, forty-six hundred for July fourth, and twenty-six thousand for fireworks from the council, down to the recreation budget, because we felt like that is a more of an appropriate place to, to place those type of things. Also, we've added fifty thousand to council budget for business incentives and ten thousand for discretionary, based on whether it's economic drivers or, you know, whatever, whatever that deems to be appropriate. Increased police budget by around a hundred ninety from the original proposed 2018 budget to proposed 2019 budget. Added thirty K to Park's budget for two more baseball field dirt rehabs. On the general fund debt service, that remains the same. We have a, an aquatic center, uh, bond payments that go through there as well as a, a 2010 street bond payments. Some of the general fund capital projects that will happen, or that we've expected to happen in that year. Master plan, two hundred thousand. IT improvements, twenty thousand. We're, we're continually, continually trying to keep up with the current century as far as IT is concerned. So I felt like we've made, made some vast improvements that way already. Three access control systems on the city building, that has to do with, uh, security on doors and making sure that that is up to date as well. Vehicle replacement, uh, thirty thousand. Police vehicle replacement, sixty thousand. Fire SCBA packs and balls, forty-eight thousand. Fire extrication power unit, seven thousand.
On the, on the, sorry, on the fire SCBA taxes, that in addition to the twelve that was spent in the budget reopen then?
Right, right. Fire extr- extrication power unit, seven thousand. Animal shelter cages, twelve thousand. Animal shelter AC unit, ten thousand. Streets road mailing machine, ten thousand. Street sidewalk project, sixty thousand, which carries on with the same trend that we're currently seeing right now with sidewalks being built, which we're excited about.
Which is awesome, yeah.
Yeah. Streets utility improvement project, five hundred thousand. Streets alley improvements, hundred thousand. Airport runway rehab, three million, three point three five, four million. Cotton one creek pathway project, hundred and ten thousand. Park shed, twenty-five thousand. And park lawnmower, fifteen, fifteen thousand. Cemetery lawnmower, fifteen thousand. Any questions up to that point? Water fund, we expect revenue in the water fund to incline by two and a half percent, especially due to usage and especially considering that this year is considerably pretty dry. So, um, on the expense side, we expect it to increase by one and a half percent. Additional fifty K in depreciation is expected, expected because of our closure of projects, raising the Victory Water budget to the max of four and thirty, four hundred and thirty K. Water fund capital projects, uh, automatic utility reading equipment, three hundred thousand. Backdoor replacement, thirty thousand. Durgan well, put back into service, thirty-five thousand. Replacement of the public works vehicle, thirty thousand seven fifty. Um, water master plan, a hundred thousand. On the sewer fund, we expect that to increase by two and a half percent. It may likely increase more than that, especially due to the fact that we're, uh, doing business with Crescent Point, which has been a great help on sewer fund. But conservatively speaking, two and a half percent, especially considering the additional usage in South Cove. So increase in revenue of seventy K expected from the South Cove area. Expenses in that same fund expected to increase by one and a half percent. Additional one hundred K in depreciation because of the South Cove sewer project. Sewer fund capital projects on Eighth South from Fifth East to State, State, CIB, a hundred thousand. And sewer master plan, a hundred thousand. Everything remains, expect to remain similar in the sanitation fund, working with, with, uh, K and K. Grant funding opportunities there, uh, five hundred thousand, possibly in a CIB utility improvement project. Two hundred K in a grant for master plans, a hundred sixty-four thousand in airport state grant for airport runway. Two point nine three seven million from FAA airport grant. Hundred fifty K from CIB for the automatic utility reading equipment. Hundred K for CIB grant for, uh, uh, State Street or Eighth South sewer project. Obviously, those are anticipated, but there's a lot of work to go through here there.
I was just going to say, I think, uh, for those of you that made a spot or had sticker shop with the airport runway or expansion project, the three point four million or whatever it was, uh, so two point three, or two point nine million and, and then another hundred sixty thousand will be grant worth that, so.
Risk is sure.
Your master plan, just to give you an idea, master plan grant has been submitted. Airport, State and FAA have been, uh, reviewed and we're on track for that. We've improved and approved those. CIB grant automation that has not been submitted, but we would look at that maybe in February to, to submit for. And the CIB, the hundred thousand, uh, for the Eighth South, we've actually awarded, um, that one. So most of those, we don't oftentimes guess too far in the future with grants because we're not quite sure. But most of these have actually been awarded. Only one on there isn't a very much sure that. But we'll still, we'll still go to our funding meeting next, this week to, to finalize, uh, the Fifth East and State Streets, uh, Eighth South and Fifth East. We'll finalize that one. Um, you should have got my heating and fire on all that. But most of these are actually grants that we expect to receive the funds in, that have been applied for and, and we're on track to receive, so.
I promise we don't have crystal ball.
You did, you do really well. We appreciate it.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Now we'll go ahead, we'll go ahead.
Just good job.
Thank you. Um, Dave and I have been able to be involved with that and appreciate all the artwork that goes into the crunch ones of those numbers. It's good to see. It's, appreciate the, the work. Uh, we'll go ahead and, um, move into, uh, a public hearing. And we'll open it up to the public if there are, is any comment or questions from the public on our final budget. It's 2018, 2019. Seeing none, we'll go back into regular open meeting and we entertain a motion to approve the 2018, 2019 budget as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman, we have a motion by Councilman White. I'll second that. And a second by Councilman Baird. And we'll hold on to that. Carolyn, are we in trouble?
She's just wanting to make sure that, that it's the ordinance for the final budget or that is what we're presenting is, is, this is the detail of the ordinance. There's, uh, graph language that says this is an ordinance, but these are the numbers. This is the substance of, of the budget. That is what the budget is. Again, you've been presented that. She's just talking, making sure that, that the motion is the ordinance that, that encompasses.
Well, let's make sure we, so what is the ordinance number?
Twenty eighteen, four eighteen.
So, I would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance 2018, four eighteen to adopt the 2018, 2019 final budget.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman White? I'll second that. Second by Councilman Baird. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Great. You, you have a place for planning program resolution?
Right? Yeah, I haven't talked about this one. It has been sent out, uh, to the group. It is an annual, um, item required by the state to, to present and to have a resolution from the council on. It does cover our, um, where we're at, the expenses we've, we have, what our treatment programs are in place, um, our expected repair costs, those kind of items. Has been set out, uh, to each of you. And at this point, um, it's fairly routine. It is kind of how we report you the information, but the state wants us to report it after having adopted it by resolution, uh, rather than simply sending the report in. That way it gives you an opportunity to see it and we enjoy that you've been able to have that chance. So at this point, that's where we're at. So, you know, if there's questions, we can look in question.
Yeah, any questions on the resolution? I did have, I had one and it was further down in the, in the body of the resolution. It had to do with our five, uh, ten and twenty-year, um, reserve funds. And, uh, we discussed that earlier. Uh, it said, there's some questions that were answered in the negative there. But that's due to the fact that, um, a lot of those funds that we would anticipate in the next five, ten, or twenty years would come from grants and loans and the cities municipality should be stockpiling money.
We, we don't have the money to repair everything that we would need to over the next twenty years. We do not have that in the current PK account, I believe.
So those are some of the questions I had and, and, uh, are there any others?
That's a great point because it's a lot different than a private company where you're trying to have more for a rainy day. The government's not allowed to do this.
We do build some for rainy day. We don't, rainy day is a specific fund type in government. But we do have money to set aside for capital expenditures like that. We do save up for them. We try to be prudent, but I, to have, to have that kind of funds to, to replace what we'd need, we would need to have grant funds. And, and we'd have to go for those. But, but we try to save up and that's what we have our match, so that we can take money to, to add to that. So, anyway. Make a motion that we approve that.
Okay, and, um, we have a motion, I, I just should mention, that's resolution twenty eighteen dash two eighty-five. So we have a motion to approve by Councilman Labor. I'll second it. And a second by Councilman White. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, the PTIP account, I would enter the resolution.
So this is our savings account. So, um, they want, they, they want to know who they would contact in the case that they have a question about the account. This isn't necessarily access account. These are just contact to the accounts and, um, and who can interact with the, the, the fund. And so if we open an account, close an account, those kind of transactions, they wanna know who, who they should be working with. This is the first time, I believe, that they've asked us to actually formalize this. John and I have been the ones that have acted this way. The finance director and city manager have acted in this capacity for twenty years. This is the first time the, the state is asking, they're asking us to say, okay, make sure so that they know in their file when somebody calls, somebody isn't creating it outside of the organization in the air. I mean, we, we get into this broad world and we don't want anybody else creating them outside of our organization in our name. That, that's not what we want. That's what this is. Um, we recommend that it be approved. And it is their form. They, they've given all the, the detail and form. This is just passed out from the state and asked that we adopt it, so.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I have, I have something to say. I did call the Treasury office and talk with them and Ryan's saying it's true. And I think it is, uh, I think, I don't see any reason why not to appoint, uh, them as the people that can control the account and take away names from those who would, uh, have access. I think, she said that you could put another person on there if you want, just for oversight, just to kind of keep them informed when something does change and shoot out an email. I don't think it would hurt to have the mayor as one of those people, just to, to see when things happen. So, you know, he could be informed. That's just a thought I have. Not that I have any lack of trust for you guys. You guys have shown me all, um, you know, reasons.
Is that the motion to add it?
Yeah.
Just making sure that, or provided it in and send that. I just wanna make sure if you wanna add it.
At first, you already asked my thought and, and of course it's up to the council, but I think it wouldn't hurt to have him on there just so that when you guys make a change, he gets to see it. So let's do this. Um, so we have a motion on the table to approve the resol- have the resolution with the amended, amended to have the mayor as.
Added item.
As an added item. Is that correct? Okay. Any discussion on that or any other motion? Here we have a motion on the table to adopt that resolution. Seconded by councilman Labor, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Bell commission, bell commissioner requirements.
So this one, I need to change the screen.
Sorry, I've got so much stuff on the budget.
Oh, thank you, thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you. So this one is a recommendation from the police chief to appoint full-time officers and those listed in the, in here, to appoint those officers as a bell commissioner. Now, currently, currently what we do is we allow those individuals to be able to plug the bell here and they'll take that, instead of, the other option would be to transport them to the jail, somebody to jail to take the bell and then the officer can come back. It saves the officer's time in transport to take that just for collection of bell. It's what we currently operate, it's currently operated practice. We haven't had the resolution in the last couple of years, but as, as we're looking through and trying to make sure that we're complying in each of the areas, we're going to, I can see out there.
Yes, yes.
Can you let him come in?
He patiently waited.
There you go.
I thought you left, but I was going to ask you.
I saw you walked by, so anyway, he can correct anything that's, is it kind of?
That, that's right, we've been doing this, this performing malfunction. However, we haven't had the correct documentation to do it. I meant it should have been approved by the council and we haven't done that and that's come to our attention, so. That's what we are proposing.
We need a motion on that?
I have a question though.
I, and I think the intent is good and I love the idea, I just want to verify that this is actually within state law. It refers to the U S C seventeen thirty-two dash one. And in there, I'll just, I'll just read it and maybe I'm missing something, but it says that in the first item in that law says the county executive with the advice and consent of the county legislative body may appoint one or more responsible and discreet members of the sheriff's department of the county as a bell commissioner. And it doesn't discuss at all the city.
So what happened? I believe you can correct me. I'm seeing this off of the, off of the county standard form, there's a city code that would say, would probably restrict for someone, we pulled it off of county.
So this is a city thing, then?
It is a city and, and we've also pulled the, in, in the, the new office, we pulled that and modified it from county. So there is a modification from the county office, so.
Okay, yeah, and that, the, the letter that I read, that I saw that we would be signing, it referenced the Utah state code, which is what I just read, so we might need to change that to city code.
So we would reference that to the state code that references cities rather than counties.
Okay, yeah, there is one, I haven't seen that one, so.
These are misdemeanors and warrants only, felonies, felonies still go to other counties, so.
And I think that'll make it a hundred times better to have people on the ground that can do that, so.
Because when we can simply strive for soon to U C seventeen thirty-two one, it, it will do the same appointment and that, that would help. That would probably be more consistent. Striving those, that first portion, portions.
Yeah, so I agree. Great, any other questions? We can go ahead and, yeah, seeing them, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve?
I'll second this. Motion by councilman Labor and seconded by councilman Baird, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Before we move on, because people are still almost, mostly awake, and I was going to ask you, Rick, because I saw you said in the house when we had the budget, if there was enough money in the, in the police budget for you for the upcoming year?
There's never enough. But we do have money to add an officer, which we want to do, so.
And I know it was a hundred and ninety thousand that was in the budget, I don't know if anybody caught that, but that's what that money will go for, so.
Can I say something else? With this code for what we just passed, it does require a bond for each officer, at least according to code for the county.
Our trust guy is gone, right? We have in our trusts, they cover a lot of the bonds within that umbrella.
Okay.
Financial, so they recover that, we'll, we'll make sure of it. That's generally covered under our umbrella of our trust.
Okay.
They're generally the ones that.
All right, yeah, that'd be good to see.
But we can have a check. I'll have John have a check. It has been in the past.
Okay. Thank you, councilman Baird. Just really quickly, and I, this isn't normally a place for it to advertise, but William J. Fetter, world-class historian, will be in town. I told Pastor B. Kyberly that I would mention that. That will be this coming Saturday at six thirty P M. Also, Sunday, ten thirty and Sunday at six thirty, just wanted to make that. Said he's a really good speaker and I just wanted to let people know, let people know at home that we have enough opportunity like that.
Get it to our public information, we can get it on a column.
Yes, would you mind doing that for me? Great, I appreciate that. Now moving on. Eight hundred south C D B G project award, is that what Troy's here for?
Totally. Just as he's, he's doing.
Ryan, thank you for being here.
We have order from funding agencies that are helping us to fund eight hundred south. The first project is the C D B G, this is for storm drain and water line. It's the first project that we've worked on. We also have sewer, we also have the asphalt and sidewalks for the gutter. So, this is the first phase of this project, of a, of a much greater project, but this is the first one. It was bid, this is the amount of money that the C D B G would let us go with and it is federal money and so we don't want to either mix federal with, with state and C I B with state funds. So, anyway, we received three bidders and an engineer estimate, engineer was long and we recommended he build it with his wealth now. Unless he says differently.
Hey, we're close on this one. To add to that, this happens to be the second time we bid this one. The first time that we bid this project, the bids came in well over the engineer estimate and so we went back and, and revamped the project a little bit here so we could re-advertise it. And with this one, as Ryan was saying, our estimate was just a little over two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Our little bidder came in at two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, under ten percent difference. With this, we have supplied these, this bid tabulation and information on our contractor to the state, to the state office for C D B G and that's a letter that we have given you here that they authorize us to proceed with contracting. And so what we're here for tonight is to get the council to go ahead and award this project to Hughes Construction and we have Mr. Huber with us here tonight with this and to give authorization to the mayor to be able to sign the contracts and get those to Rex in the morning, get bonds, get signatures and get going on this project, if so, is the council's desire to do so.
Can I just make a comment?
You bet.
Three, at least three years ago, four years ago, when I was on the council, eight south was one of those things that I wanted to see done and thought needed to be done and was something that I was very adamant about. And to see it now, this close to being done is, is super exciting for me. It'll help out the area in South Town, it'll help out the buses with fifth east and Centennial School and putting in some sidewalks there and I think it's a, these funds, the C D B G funds were something that we, I don't think did in the past and I don't know who it was that found them or and sourced them, but.
John's a little, asked another word.
But I just, I think it adds to the project and it made it a viable project, something that we could do and tackle and so appreciate the effort, so that's all I have to say. Any other comment from the council?
It's good to have somebody local doing it and be good to get going as that, you're ready. That's true. All right. I think, do we need a motion?
Yes.
I'd make a motion that we approve this recommendation to accept the bid and get the project going.
We have a motion on the table to accept, most likely, seconded by councilman Baird, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, let's get started, thank you.
We're, we're ready to get started and just to add to what Ryan indicated to you here, just with that, we've been working closely with Ryan and I think Brett talked to you this afternoon. We're ready to advertise next week the sewer portion of this and probably within thirty days, we'll be advertising the gutter sidewalk portion of the project through U dot. And next Thursday, a week from Thursday, is when we need the C I B to finalize the road portion of the project. So, the project is happening. The only other thing I'd like to add to you, I don't know if you've had a chance to be down, but we've got state street chip sealed today, so it's all black. It looks like, it looks like the finished road almost. We're scheduled to paint next Monday on that, so by next Monday, state street will look like it's supposed to look. And so, things are progressing.
That's great, right. And just on that with chip seal, the LeCoon Street has been chip sealed and they've started to flush and they'll finish it up, so.
I was a moment ago, a few meetings ago.
Well, they, they came in and fixed LeCoon Street on that east end a lot too last week coming out.
Yeah, we've got a patch, so it's been chip sealed and, and ready. And what you'll see tomorrow, more than likely, is that we'll flush the downtown area, down by Nelson's and the bank in that area early, before we get much traffic and if they don't get the entire roadway flushed, it'll be a morning later in the week that we'll get the rest of it flushed and then be painting it. Like I say, on Monday, both of those roads, so.
But is the flush mean total?
It's the final coat and it's a chip seal, yeah, with the chip seal and Joe can jump in, correct me when I fail. With it, is, as you do the chip seal, what you'll do is you'll put down a heavier coat of oil and then put the, the rock on top of that oil, which is what holds it in place. And then flush is the light coat of oil on top, paints it black, holds everything in, gives it a background for us to paint on, so the paint shows through like it, like it should and gives the indication and lets people know that it is a new surface, a new road, so.
How, how happy are we with using the ceramic chips over the rock for, for chip sealing?
I can speak for the engineers all. From the engineer, we're, we're really excited about, we're happy with it. And as we indicated when you approved it to go that route here, cost-wise, it is beneficial to us to go that route. Now is when the test is going to come in, you know, and, and like I say, from my standpoint, we've used it in a lot of places for a lot of years and have had really good results and now it'll be your road department that tells us how it functions here and they'll be able to answer that question for us over the next couple of years, how happy they are and how happy you'll be with me after they respond.
Are we painting LeCoon pretty too, I assume?
Yes.
That'll all be covered up.
It'll all be painted next week.
I'm sure we're good with that new school, I drove it today, it's already added there, that's terrific.
It covers all the patches that have happened. We don't, it's filled over those, it's really to help seal and make sure that we have a viable road for long range, so.
So this is happening just on the east side of state street then again?
Between fifteen hundred east and state street, the whole section probably.
Just the first block right there in the morning, it doesn't really matter, but that's garbage.
Yeah, and what they're going to do is be flushing between first east and third east. So, in that area, that's what we'll be in the morning.
Shouldn't be too big of a problem, but.
Okay.
So how far down?
It's good that you come to these meetings. No, just basically, really it's from main street or kind of boarding, everyone like at two hundred, state street. The area through there on Wednesday is the service state for the residents.
What I'll do is, is I'll let the contractor know, we should get out of this meeting.
That's it, it's only four or five stands right there, right on.
So many residents right there.
I'll, I'll get ahold of really good like products and I can mail that, just so that we're all aware.
Yeah. You guys, thank you.
One and two A M.
It's a bit long. That's usually you have the least number of cars there. And right now, when I walk into this meeting, it'll be warm enough at one or two A M.
Great, nice one. Well, thank you. Thanks again for the presentation and we're excited to see that take off. Next item is Johnson Water Agreement Discussion. I'll go ahead and take that for most part, if anybody wants to jump in. We'll have Ryan go ahead and put up a couple of things that we need to discuss and have a preliminary approval on. This isn't a final approval, but it's just getting us to the point where we can start drawing up the official contracts with Johnson Water. So we've worked with, we've had Dustin, councilman Dustin White and councilman David Laborman involved as well as myself with the negotiations. We've had our staff assisting us with coming up with possible solutions to, to compensation for Johnson Water, those types of things that we could incorporate into the agreement. And it's been a really, it's been a group effort.
And Ryan, from the water department, Brian Dryburn was there, moisted up details.
Yeah, about flows, impacts on our system and those types of things. And so, we really had a.
I apologize, I'm going to have him, if he can get that, it came across as, when it scanned and it saved it in here, it came across as black and white. So if he can just scan it and color it for us, that'll show us better, so.
And we can go through the, once of the agreement, these, these are things that we have looked at that, that basically formed the foundation of the agreement. We, before we even got to, to the details of the agreement, we set some parameters to work with them that would be fair to both parties and we adhered to those parameters as we move forward and form this agreement. So these are kind of the, the highlights and obviously the details would be, there would be more detail in the agreement, but these are the main points that we wanted the council to see, that we had come to up to this point and get again, a vote of approval on what we have so far, so that we can continue on. So, one, Roosevelt City agrees to honor and respect boundaries as recorded. That's something. JR, will, will, what we've agreed upon, those changes in the boundaries that already exist for Johnson Water, will they actually be recorded or do we need to say as agreed upon? I think those boundaries, what I'd like to see, and those are more of the details in the agreement, but I'd like to see some type of a survey done that, that defines where the agreement boundary line will be and that way it's, there's no question as to where that may be. And those will be in the details, but once that's established, so what they're meaning by that, not only the boundaries that are currently there, but the, the agreement boundaries will be respected. And so those need to be spelled out in my mind in that agreement, so. Johnson Water Improvement District agrees to give Roosevelt City permission to serve within the agreed service boundaries. What that means and what will be more spelled out is without any oversight. We can work in that area, we can issue any connection without having to, to consult with Johnson Water on that. We can move and, and act independently within that. Johnson Water agrees to transfer to Roosevelt City customers and infrastructure in the industrial park area within the agreed service area. Roosevelt City is responsible for the changeover construction and cost. So there are several connections that would fall within that agreement boundary. I think there's eighteen to twenty connections. I think there's eighteen to twenty connections that we would inherit basically at no cost, only the cost to tie into our infrastructure, so they were willing to give that with the agreement. And that would eliminate any duplications in, in that area, which is what we're looking to do.
And that was their idea, and so that was promising, as they offered that, that they were truly, that was a stone in their shoe that they, they couldn't catch. And they, they came over with that idea to say, we don't like this, so we'll let you take these over.
Yeah, and, and again, it, it really showed that the, that the parameters that we set in the beginning, which was, one of those was to not duplicate services in, in the future, showed that they, they were serious about adhering to those, and those parameters, and I'll explain a little later, will be set in the agreement for future negotiations or as we move forward and, and see that things need to be changed possibly, those parameters will dictate how that's to work. Roosevelt City agrees that there will be no service, services beyond the service agreement boundary with the, without the approval of the Johnson Water Board of Trustees. That's self-explanatory, Roosevelt City agrees to install meters and valves on each line at the point where it crosses the Johnson Water District Boundary. Now, do we have those in?
The maps.
You have the maps too.
Okay, do you have a home pointer?
We can put the cursor on when you.
So what that means, I can just put them, see that? So the highlighted pink line is the, first of all, the blue line is Johnson Water's current boundary. And you can see that Roosevelt Airport, the industrial park and everything fall within Johnson Water's boundary. The highlighted, the pink or magenta, whatever you want to call it, line is the proposed agreement boundary that we, we would work with then. There would be meters placed at each intersecting spot where our lines intersect their boundary, there would be a main meter placed. And those meters, we will, from the down in the agreement, will calculate the water that's going into Johnson Water's area and we will compensate them you know, for that water, per thousand gallons, at a rate that we will, will get to here in a minute. This will change a little bit, I did talk to Johnson Water, you can see kind of these dark lines here. We will make sure that that boundary fits the master plan for the airport and so all the growth that is, is expected there will be incorporated within that, so that will change just a little bit. Can you move to that other map? This, I talked to Ben, this is multi cam, they have a connection, this blue line coming up in, in the back, we have a connection in the front, they didn't realize we had a connection coming off five oh forty, so they were going to exempt that out of the boundary, but I talked to them the other day about that, told them we did have a connection. They're agreeable to leave that within the boundary, it only makes sense, our meter's here that serves that area, we would have to deduct that out if it's not in that service boundary, and so that'll stay the same. Over here, in this area we discussed, they were talking about moving this a little bit, and I told them, look, let's look at the, the proposed development in that area, how it's, you know, the plots and things and how that works, and let's make that boundary line fit more the development than, you know, just because they do have this connection here, and so there was a little leak right there, but not a lot.
Not just North Pole Line, it's that leaky.
Yeah, so there's just this little area here and I told them, you know what, it would make more sense to just go to the plots, look at the developers and see what is proposed there and follow what's proposed, so it makes more sense, and they're agreeable to that, so. Any questions, so here's where other meters would come, where our lines, main lines would intersect into their, as you can see the blue, into their boundary.
What was the total number of meters?
Four.
Four.
On here, yeah. Are there any questions so far on that?
So the meters are basically there to, that's paying a royalty to be in their, their boundaries.
Yes.
And it's, it was a great, a lot of meetings, but everybody was agreeing that we wanted to get things behind us with ill feelings and to move ahead, and then whenever we go to do anything that we communicate, and that was a, it's been a very, it was a very positive.
Yeah, and to grant. To clarify some of that, to, to, to explain why the compensation is somewhat necessary is because they have bonds that they, they bonded in some of those areas, and so if we've taken their ability to receive revenue in that area, they can't satisfy those bonds or they have a hard time satisfying those bonds. And so this kind of helps with that. So moving along, any questions so far?
So, some of our customers that were, we provided leaders to that were in a dislocated area. Does this encompass them?
Yes.
So there's them that were abandoning and all those people are happy.
Correct.
We're just absorbing theirs that were there, so that'll all be under.
So we may say everything we have in that area, in the dislocated area, but then we're also going to take some of their infrastructure in that area as well, just so that there's no conflict.
Okay.
Which was a pretty, pretty neat deal. So, that was five we just talked about, number six, Roosevelt City agrees to compensate Johnson Water at the rate of fifty cents per thousand gallons as determined from the sum of the readings of the meters, which are the main meters located, located at the Johnson Water Boundary. And then, we talked a little bit about doing that quarterly, they said monthly, they're agreeable to quarterly, they'd be more beneficial on our end quarterly.
I think as we calculate quarterly is, is helpful, we may in the future move to monthly if it becomes an easy calculation, but we always like more freedom than less, especially when we start into something.
John or Ryan, do you guys want to talk to that, I mean, we spent, I was involved with that at least asking, I asked a ton of questions and I appreciate you guys coming up with the information, but we were able to dial in what, what we thought was fair and realistic to be able to do and just how did you guys feel with how we came to that conclusion?
You know, I think, I think John's done a lot of work on it, obviously it's one we hoped for, but to be able to come to a, to an agreement, I think is, is, is good if that's what it takes, there, there's obviously costs of agreements. And, and you know with every, every spot, I mean, it's just, it's what compromise becomes, and if this is the big sticking point on their side, I think it's something we can, we can work with, obviously. The idea was something less, but I think it can be.
Probably the deepest evaluation of our water system financially and costs and everything that's ever been dwelt in, trying to, you know, to really get a legitimate, fair cost and I, I just look, and I remember coming on in two thousand ten, I think it was, and we weren't, we weren't even accounting for what water we produced and how much we used, we and it's come such a long ways in the accountability within our own water department, now it's, I'm very thankful for that, like accountability.
Yeah, thank you, go ahead, John.
I agree with what our manager said and also mayor, we've spent hours and hours on this thing, dialing in on, on everything regarding culinary to, to dial in on, on this particular range of figures here, so. Yeah, there's been a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of hours put into it, so it's a, it's a good thing, I think, so.
I noticed it didn't, didn't break the two thousand nine, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget entirely. But, yeah, and it, and it was, and I, again, I appreciate the work and, and we didn't take it lightly, I mean, we looked at it and we, we separated out culinary from secondary, we separated everything out, we accounted for depreciation, we accounted for possible grants and we were as fair as we possibly could be with our crystal ball that we have, right? So, and these guys did great, any questions on, on that? Yes.
So having lived on Pole Line Road for a while, on what would be the south side of that proposed line. I don't, obviously I don't live there anymore, but I remember I approached Brad years ago about doing something with my water down there, because it's been the nastiest taste of water. And he indicated that there was a little bit of an issue back then, however, what I am not proposing, but suggesting is anything within Roosevelt City's limits, to me, ought to be within that line.
Oh, believe me, we, we, we feel the same, but, and this has been thirty years and that's not going to happen.
And so, understood, but at the same time, just for like, on a residential basis, the ability to pay one bill, or just happen to pay two bills, just dumb little things like that.
I think that's, I think that's the big reason why this has been thirty years in the process, because, because it's been hard for Roosevelt City to say they're in our city, we should be able to provide them services.
One of, one of the things that I think will help with that is what we've agreed to further, further on in the agreement here and the water quality, to be completely honest, now the Victory Pipeline is taking water in that area, thanks Clyde and Duchene County Water Conservancy District. Whether you're getting Roosevelt, maybe it's coming out of Roosevelt's pipeline or theirs, it's probably the same.
And it got better, don't get me wrong, originally when I first went down there.
So, talking to that, so here's some of the things, Johnson Water, number seven, for example, Johnson Water agrees to follow Roosevelt City's standards when installing the infrastructure within Roosevelt City, so that was one thing we wanted to make sure. Johnson Water agrees to cooperate with Roosevelt City in collecting sewer fees by interrupting water servicing until they're better Roosevelt City. We could even put in there, we may collect, this is a final, but you know, to make it convenient, we could collect that and then, and then maybe when we do it quarterly, pay, pay Johnson to, for convenience or something like that, there's little details that we can add in there. Because a lot of it comes down to convenience at that point in time and, so, but anyway, good, good thoughts. This contract may be amended when agreed upon by both entities and both parties agree to cooperatively work together to provide quality drinking water to the population of our area. Now, those parameters that we set, that pretty much dictated the agreement, will be put, and we both agreed, those fundamentals that we came up with will be put, that rubbish will be put in here to make us, help us remember how we came to this and in future, you know, as we work cooperatively in the future, those will be the guiding hand in, in how we move forward. And that agreement must be approved by their body of control, so that's basically it in a nutshell, but I think for thirty years of conflict, it's, tonight it can be all the over, I mean, this is kind of historic for us and it's kind of a neat deal, but it still has to be approved by the council and so, are there any questions on this?
And by the Johnson Water Board has.
Correct.
I just wanted to say more too, appreciate the mayor's leadership in this and organizing and Dallas Murray from the other side, and Dusty Monks was there, and Dixon. And we met usually out there, but our last one, we held here and it was a, the goal with everybody was to try to look to the future that we serve. The Roosevelt community is a lot bigger than just our boundaries and they want to serve and that ultimately we bring the best to everybody and we work together in doing it and it's been a, it's a great thing. And this is, this is a lot bigger than the dollar figure, it's eliminating hopefully some ill will and trust, now we can trust each other and you know, talk openly ahead of time about projects and work together to what would be most beneficial and most economical for everybody, so instead of competing, try to have, now we'll work together on it. It was great to see this get to that, where we're at, so.
I'm grateful that you guys have worked on this, I haven't really been involved in the history much, but I, I know that it's a big deal and I appreciate the time you've been putting to it.
Any other comments or questions? And again, I'd like to just thank everybody that's involved, I mean, we, the team that we put together to do that was the right people at the right time and that's what it takes sometimes for these agreements, just have the right people at the right time, so.
There's been a lot of people previously inching along and that's very much appreciated.
Absolutely, so with that, I entertain a motion at least to proceed from this point to working towards a final agreement and going to the attorneys to hammer out some of those details. So, on all said, we have a motion by Councilman White and a second by Councilman Labor, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That's amazing, that's thirty years, I don't think people realize, thirty years. Good stuff.
Walking up to the, coming up their life.
Yeah.
What's amazing is, both of them did things when the other one couldn't do things and, and trying to help the public, we were anti, we were causing conflict with each other and instead of just sitting down and communicating and doing it, but that's the way of the human being, that's good to see, some, we all compromised on this and that was the best.
Great, now we have Clyde, sorry, we put you in best for last, Clyde.
Thanks.
I have him, Cal will have Ryan present and then if you, you don't have any comments or thoughts, we'd invite you to come out. But we have the Duchene County Water Conservancy District Water Supply Agreement Discussion, so I'll just kind of delve into it a little bit and then you correct me or add to. But this agreement came about in two thousand fourteen, I believe, and it, in, in that agreement, when we signed the agreement, Clyde wasn't there at the time, it was another individual and we had purchased a thousand acre feet of water, however, and we had a flexibility in taking that water of thirty, from thirty gallons a minute to up to over thirteen hundred gallons, and so there was quite a large flexibility in that. Well, anybody knows water systems don't work that way, for the most part, and the other the other thing that really limited this was the fact that what was sold to us was a volume of water, but what the filing or the right is, the water right is, is a not a volume, but a flow of water, and so that really put a damper on, because four second feet of water is, is the flow, which is a little over seventeen hundred gallons a minute. So if we were to take thirteen hundred gallons a minute, we're almost taking two, or three fourths of the water right. And those that have contracts to receive water also would not be able to receive their water, and so there's been that conflict since that agreement has been made, and so we've been working with Clyde to look at what solutions there are, because one of the things for Roosevelt is that if we're restricted on how much flow we can get during the summer, we're not able to get enough flow during the winter to actually utilize all of the acre feet that we have available to us. And therefore we're paying a fee for that raw water and for the Victory Pipeline, whether we use it or not. And so we were, that was kind of something that we wanted to look at, how we, how do we mitigate that and how do we fix that problem? And also help Clyde to not have to have these big swings and, or try to have these big swings in the pipeline. And so I'll leave it at that, Ryan and Clyde, if you want, kind of talk about what we've discussed as remedies, possible remedies and solutions to that.
So, so a few, start and then five, if you'd like. Few things that to keep in mind, we have a tank, so we can, we can vary some volumes at certain points, but we only have six hundred gallons a minute during the, during the winter, so to be able to take six hundred gallons a minute year round, like the other districts have, or the other users have committed to. To be able to do that, we, we don't have that flow, we have a lot of flow that comes in the summer time, so we've tried to figure that out. If, we've taken a year to make sure that we knew how the system worked, we didn't rush into, to just changing right away. Clyde has been, has been good to work with and I hope our staff has been good with you. Clyde has been, has been good to work with, and I hope our staff has been good with you. But trying to find out and, and working what we can do, and where the peaks are and where the bottom is. And, and we've come, I think ours was sixty on the low end, and we're saying, you know what? Constantly throughout the year, we hold two hundred fifty to three hundred gallons. So, rising on that level through the winter is not a big, big issue for us, to rise off that sixty. The problem with the sixty is that it's so small, then the chlorine residual is affected. And, and that becomes another issue with the, with the tank and with us. And so, that's an easy one for us to come to. It's on the high end that, that we make up for that, that we can't use. So, Clyde has been doing and looking at, at options. There is an option to be able to go out and, and purchase water rights. So if they went out and purchased the water rights, they could do that, but it would be at a substantial cost. Especially if they were buying, yeah, especially if they were buying water rights for us to be able to pay up to the maximum. And again, the water rights have to be flowing. For us, we're probably never going to hit the fifteen hundred gallons a minute flow. And if we did, it would be on very short periods of time that that would be possible. So to buy water rights up to that point, you know, we don't feel that that's necessary. So for us to be able to come down from that, I guess thirteen, come down from that thirteen hundred is, is something, you know, coming down from that is, is, we understand. It's, it's where that happy medium is, and that really comes to an issue, yes.
Sorry, Ryan, really, and purchasing the extra water rights would not only increase our rate, it would increase the rate of everyone on the Victory Pipeline.
Right.
So we would be, we would be, to satisfy that high demand, we would be increasing our own rate and increasing everybody on the whole Victory Pipeline, so.
Right, I agree. So a few things, in order to make sure that we have enough flow, if we went to, I think we calculated, and I have to remember here, if we had three hundred and, is it three hundred fifty in winter months? Five hundred in spring and fall months, and then it was like nine hundred in, in the summertime. We could do something like that to fit it. Nine hundred is really kind of the top of what we can. Right now, we run six to seven hundred, what are we running now?
Seven forty.
Seven forty, so we're up to seven forty. But what we're seeing is saying, hey, you know what? If there was an option, and, and I think Clyde may talk to this, but if there was an option for us to go, instead of having a thousand acre feet, if we knew what we knew today, off of how our system runs and the hydraulics and how it would flow, the staff would have recommended purchasing six hundred to eight hundred acre feet, rather than buying a thousand. We would have recommended that lower number, knowing the hydraulics and knowing how the system is today. We don't have a lot of growth necessary in that area, that you just talked about, the growth that would have been in that area would have, have been in Johnson's area. So we don't, we have some growth to, towards the south, but not, not as much as, as previous councils would have gone at this point. That, that should be considered, but at that point, we probably would have been there. The problem is, is, is that amount has been committed to the CIB in funding, and has been committed to try to, 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 to max those bond encumbrance and, and the agreements for, for that water. So, what we'd like to be able to do is have as a proposal to allow Clyde to market that two hundred to four hundred acre feet. If there was a possibility for him to acquire somebody else to purchase that, we would, we would recommend that he be able to, to do that. And in, in turn, we would agree to lower the top end usage number, so that we could bring that down. So that they could be serviced by that water, but we also reduce that down and match our hydraulics better. And we, we, at this point, we'd be looking at, at some of those items, right? I think that's kind of a little tough.
Yeah, that, and that, that covers the main, I know that's a lot of numbers thrown out there, that's a lot of, you know, seven hundred, six hundred, thirteen hundred. But we, we went through this and went through this, and the other thing that Clyde's done too is, is, you know, they have other water that they would like to sell, and that they would probably need to sell. But they're willing to sell the water that we have available first, for us being willing to work with him and, and trying to do that. So Clyde, do you have anything to add?
I think you've covered, I think, I think you've covered it very well. I, I think it's been a good endeavor. It's been something that really kind of, and your last agreement kind of probably fits in well with this. And I'm glad that we was able to come to the consensus that we've been leaning towards before you were actually looking at what you were doing. And I think that says a lot. But in order to be able to do it, I believe that there is a possibility to truly market that water out there. We've got the interest, people are asking about it, and the feed. It is, it is a reduction to the Duchene County Water Conservancy District. And it is also a, the reduction and at the cost of the Duchene County, if you like, Duchene County Access Stephen number three, because they do help to, help the Duchene County Water Conservancy District to help take care of the excess capacity in the pipeline. But I've got the, I've got most entities also into agreeing that this is for the better, for everybody to work together, so that we don't raise other costs. And the last thing we'll do by raising costs to everybody is we hurt everybody, and that's the last thing we want to do. So we're very much in favor of doing this. I don't know if we'll ever get it down quite to the six hundred that you'd like to. No, we do have a minimum, that's what I'd like, we do have a minimum amount. We have to be able to flow a certain amount of water, even in the summertime is even more critical. The wintertime is the water, as Ryan talked about, the water quality. In the wintertime, that chlorine residual lasts longer in the pipe than cold water. The warmer your water gets, the warmer the ground gets, the less that chlorine residual makes. So in the really hot summer months, it's going to take a little bit of water to be moving through that pipe. And that's the magic number that we'll use to come up with in saying, let's try to sell down to this amount. And I think that's very important for you all to see, and, and to kind of make as your benchmark, okay?
And I think eight hundred is what we talked about, but my six hundred was, if we knew then what we know now, that would have been what we would have reckoned. But at this point in time, I think the number we've talked about is, is eight hundred.
And, and I'll say this, so it stands out for Roosevelt's sake, because I'm sure there's going to be a little bit of comment in the public sometimes as this comes out. You know, Roosevelt did get the benefit of getting the line extended up into Hancock Cove. Roosevelt got the benefit of getting a, a tank that you use for your fire flows. But I think in the consensus of what is overall happening now, everybody needs to look at, just like your last agreement that you did, they need to look at the whole schematics of everything we're talking about. And then they really look at it and say, dude, we've done well, we covered what we needed to. And it doesn't matter what sometimes other consensations were made at the time. What matters is, is what it takes to move forward from this point on.
Well, it's kind of like an engineer, sorry, and then I'll, it's kind of like an engineer, and I'm not talking bad about any engineers, Troy, but sometimes when you engineer something, and then you actually see it work, could be two different things, and so.
Exactly.
But one thing that I did want to clarify is, so what would happen is, we would basically agree to go to the flows that work, although we are still carrying the extra, we're still carrying the full two thousand, but with the agreement that that, that two hundred acre feet would be the first to sell, and they would market it for us. And so, we would still be liable for, for all thousand acre feet until they were able to sell that. But we would still be restricted, and I know, you know, I've talked a lot with Clyde, he would help us as much as he could to, to be able to utilize as much of that thousand acre feet as we could until we could get that sold. But I just wanted to make that very clear, that that doesn't mean that we're automatically, you know, free from that two hundred extra acre feet. It will take some time to get that sold.
And budget wise, we've taken, we're just, to accept that if, if, if we have to have it all, that is included in the budget that way. We're hoping, and be hopeful, but, but we are being conservative on budget that you already discussed. So that is already.
We'll go to Dave, but Councilman Laverne personally to.
Well, I was on the, I worked on the city council all the way through the Victory part, until right at the last and the final things. But it was just the magic, everybody just kept doing all the hypotheticals. Nobody knew exactly what was going to happen until, and, and Roosevelt was such a big player in it to help all the other smaller entities around here, that we were even going to, we would take more of the Victory water and give up our trade off and do all these things. We did get some benefits, but trading off the well water compared to the Victory line is a big deal. But it was for the, the thought was with our council was, this is for our community, this is a long range. This wasn't for right then, we knew it was going to cost us upfront. But when we really needed it in the future, we might not have had any option of having anything. So, it was really a big investment for the future, even though it's cost us, hopefully, you know, another ten or twenty years, it's going to say, wow, we're sure glad we did all that, because, but that was a lot of the workings, and it was, it was, I can remember driving around with Larry Ross, looking at all the hypothetical spots and where we were going to put the line. And then to get it where it did end up, and there was just some great little things that happened to get it done, and the tanks and all that. But that's, there again, it was a good cooperation of our county, which is not always work together to help each other in our water areas, and I thought it was, I just really enjoyed the time working with your group. You were on it, now you're the chairman and all, or the manager, but, but this is a good point to be at, because we have figures to work with, we know how the system does work, now we know, we'll try to make it all pay out, so.
One really quick thing, you know, we had capacity in the line, we had an additional five hundred acre feet of capacity, and that will be reduced proportionally, so it'll be a four hundred acre feet moving forward. I think that needs to be said as well, and so, but that'll give us up to twelve hundred acre feet, very potential, so. Did you have a comment?
I'm good. I had some, well, I was just, see, I'm kind of the new guy here, so I don't really know things, but, so, this contract that we have with them, it's basically, this, this whole discussion's about flows and keeping up with the flows with the other constituents, and then, but if, if we do, if they do sell some of those water shares, that frees up funds in our city, right?
Well, yeah, because we're paying, no matter what, we're paying for a thousand acre feet, and because we're restricted by the flows, we're not able to get, get all thousand acre feet, but we still have to pay the raw water costs and everything for that. So we're not getting the benefit.
To answer your question, yes, if we can, it would reduce a certain, we have included.
This is, this is.
So really, we don't lose much, because it's, I mean, we're, we're going to, we get what we paid for.
This is.
Right now, we're paying for stuff we can't use anymore.
Right, yeah, exactly.
This is a great move, but you didn't know that this, what, you just didn't know this five, six years ago, eight, when we started on all this, you just, it was the hypothetical of all engineering and everything else, and really, for what all got put in there, I'm tickled how it all turned out, so now we're trying to make it pay something.
One thing for the record, Derek, in, in one part of your comment, you said you still have to pay for the raw water costs. It's, it's, you still have to pay for the permanent capacity cost. I just wanted, in case she puts that in your, in the message, you added this permanent capacity. That's what, that's what you bought here, a thousand acre feet is your permanent capacity.
Thanks for that.
No, I just, so nobody reads back from years ago.
It'll be out of the recording, so.
The only recording to, to make sure, certainly we will, we will.
So with that, unless there's any other comment, I entertain a motion to allow the staff to continue or to, to draw a contract that would reflect the discussion that we had to reduce and narrow our amount of water we could take, and, and work that agreement with Duchene County Water Conservancy District.
I'd like to make that motion.
I have a motion. By Councilman Laverne?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman White, I'll be in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
One point of mine, their, their meeting is next Monday, and we, that's why we're, good timing here, we'll take that. We'll visit with them, I'm glad Clyde's here, we can visit and make sure of how their word takes it, and, and draft, and Clyde and I will work together to draft from there, so.
Okay. But.
Thanks.
Glad you saw the difference. Appreciate it.
Thank you, thanks for, thanks for the opportunity.
He's worked a lot on the city council and mayor up on in Alabama for a lot of years.
He is the mayor currently.
And you are now, and being another entity in Duchene County, we want to make sure we have good relationships.
It's always a pleasure, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
One, Ryan?
Moving on, I saw the purchase orders moved down.
Thanks, Troy.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments on, on the purchase orders? Do we need to approve the quarterly financial review?
Quarterly financial isn't in there, we're mid, we're mid-quarter, so we.
Mid-quarter. Just.
Financial.
Quarterly, no.
Yes.
So the purchase orders, would you entertain a motion to approve those, if, if you don't?
I'll make that motion to approve the purchase orders.
Councilman Barrett? Seconded by, Councilman Barrett, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Reports from standing committees, I, Dave, do you have anything to add? All right, Councilman Laverne, do you have?
We, I did go, the recreation meeting, that was, I think, in between our last meeting. And it's just great, I'm very impressed with our staff and their organization, and the delegation of responsibilities, the review of budgets there, and they were all, it wound up for Memorial Weekend, and a lot of big things. I mean, you've got the cemetery busier and et cetera, and the swimming pool getting opened up, and all the other events on all the different fields, and I thought it was very positive, and they're looking, planning forward more than, I mean, looking to what can we do to improve. I, I was very impressed, they talked about the resigning of our cultural activities committee, I'm not sure they attacked.
Basin Arts.
Basin Arts Council, that we don't, we do not have existing committee or chairmanship in that. And my thinking is, we really do need to have somebody in that, I don't know who, but we just volunteer out of the blue, it'll die, we hope.
Could I mention that too, because that's something that I felt? I feel like sometimes there's been a couple of committees, just because the committee, maybe the members don't want to do it anymore, whatever, they just want to dissolve it, but is that a, is that a committee that was created by Roosevelt City? Or is that, was that just a volunteer committee that, that was done? And I think the Arts Parks and Rec Committee, that will come after the Economic Development Committee, and I'll talk to that in a minute, would maybe cover some of that, and that's more of one that, it's not one that they can dissolve themselves, that's one that's appointed and approved by the council, and then we'd have some, you know, in, instead of them being able to just dissolve and be gone, then.
Would it be our responsibility to make sure there were people serving?
Correct.
And this one was different.
Correct.
Yeah. But they just wanted to get new recruits and new bodies, and basically, it burned out from doing it all.
And I think, one of the comments I made in the, in an email, and I, and I don't know if it came across, I think it came across fairly clear, but in case it didn't, is I think sometimes we have, we have so many smaller entities going in different directions, and each one of them are requiring people to come, and so you have all these efforts in different directions. And so, you can kind of combine that and get those entities to work together and to collaborate and coordinate their efforts. I feel like it would take a load off of them, but it also, they'd have better and bigger things that could happen, and you'd have more people willing to participate, because there's some direction, there's some focus, and that, you know, every, and the ones that.
That have done it, worked hard, previous, I mean, we've had some real warriors, and, but, but it's something we can't let die.
At, at this point, the plan that we would have and we'd proceed with is, is maintaining the Fourth of July Concert, which we have. That could be incorporated into our other Red Mud Run Committee that we have ongoing. And then the Mizzou Theater is the other one's planned for this year. That would give us time to, to be able to operate throughout this, the summer and fall. And then when winter comes, we can reevaluate and, and get those, and, and that may, maybe after economic. And then when winter comes, we can reevaluate and, and get those, um, and, and that may, maybe after economic and, and, and those communities reform. This one, I don't know that it has to be formed right away, it can wait till winter time when we have some tiny buildings out.
It's one of those and I, I appreciate the staff willing to take on those things, because they do need to carry on, but we really need the public participation in, in the recreation aspect.
Of a new high school, I mean, that'll be like fourteen hundred, I think, or just sixteen hundred people that can be in the new auditorium. I mean, we need to utilize.
One thing that we ought to think of is to think of what we want to have happen next year. Because a lot of those things take time to line up and get stuff, so if, if we wait too long, then we won't have anything for next year.
Yeah, I have a, uh, there was this, a small outline of that Arts Parks and Rec Committee, maybe, maybe we need to start fleshing that out more and start doing a little bit.
Well, to get some of the bigger, it'd be nice to have some big event like the, uh, Utah Symphony or, I mean, to come and perform. With the news auditorium and things like that, that we could do, some big events, but I, I've never been a real involved in those side of things too much, but.
Do you know a guy called, he invited me over to a, a concert, an orchestra concert. And they had invited some renowned guest, that was a conductor to come and his wife that was a great soprano singer and, and they were able to do that. And those are types of things, he's kinda wanting to do that more, but, and that's why we need a committee, we talk about it here, they're great ideas and, but we have to have a committee where we can meet separately. Really pursue those things.
A fair amount of our community participated in that, but I mean, they do make a difference.
And so, you know, we can, it's just, I, I get why they get burned out and.
I believe Mark Winterton is over the Fourth of July concert, he was still interested in doing that and I.
And he sits on a Red Mud Run Committee.
So if, if that's an ongoing, not just this one this year, if that's, and then.
Angel Meekum.
Angel Meekum is over the Mizzou Children's Theater and she was still wanting to be involved with that.
And that's the thing is, Angel Meekum is not a city resident, but that's the great thing about Arts Parks and Rec Committee is, is if we ever want to, as a county, become more united in.
That?
In that, that's a good opportunity for us to begin that and invite those people that are, may not be writing city limits to participate. And then it could work into a county rec district, kind of like what Vernal has or you and the county has, and then we're all.
That's been talked about a lot, but it'd be, we give it county commissioner or something. The one other thing, I did have another meeting with the trails, the bike trails group that have been meeting and, uh, Mike Holly is gonna be moving. And he's been a real spirit animal, he will be up here a lot, but he's moving back, a lot of it's, is why, that's where they're from and she's got a lot of family down there that can help her, kids do work up here. But anyway, he's been a real pusher, there were about four or five. The Cotwood Creek on the east side towards high school, that's the main spot, they're kinda looking to first really grow. And I mean, to kinda grow like they've done out on the Wassex Front, take thirty years, but they're connected from Ogden to, I think, Grove, well, now are pretty close on trails that you can ride now. You just get, gotta have people that are really interested to really, and we've lost some of those people with our downturn really and so.
And that's, I think, and I hate to keep preaching this idea, but if we had a committee set up and was organized, that would bring some continuity to that. Because then we could have somebody move into that, cause sometimes we'll have somebody pop up as a volunteer that wants to do that. And then when they're done, it goes away.
Yeah, and it is just a volunteer group, but that's kinda how a lot of them start, then they become, so anyway, that's, I hate to see them leave, but.
I had a, I had talked to Dustin Glines and there was a question about, uh, the use of the baseball fields. Um, there were, uh, traveling groups wanting to practice and, and they weren't given enough time to get the fields back ready for that. Is, was there any resolution to that or?
I got a phone call, I called the city manager, uh, about it, just asking what protocol was, they talked to.
We've asked, we've asked that the, uh, um, arts director, um, has asked that, that those two entities work together. Boys' baseball and traveling, because at that point, we're prepping it in the morning and if the boys' baseball is okay with the, with the traveling team practicing and playing before, you know, I don't think we have a problem with that, but we take, the, the staff takes pride in prepping it for those that have rented it. And, and we want to make sure that it's prepped and ready for them. Uh, boys' baseball pays by participant, um, and for that, for those fields to be ready. The traveling team doesn't, doesn't participate in, in paying for those, uh, which we're fine with having, having them be there. I do have a conflict on, on that, I, I do have some plays in traveling, so I, I appreciate what they are and, and, um, but, uh, but at that point, the interest of the staff is, is around saying, hey, the boys' baseball has, has, is paying a rental for this. We want it to be ready for them and prepped and we don't have the time in between when the practice would be and a game and we want that ready to be for the game. If those two entities don't have a problem, we'll prep in the morning and if they're okay with that, then we're okay. Um, and, and it's really, we forward those two back.
Certainly, ninety percent of them are. What's that?
About ninety percent of the travel ones are in the city, like, playing too, or making more.
Right, my son is in both, so I, I have eleven both sides, so.
Well, I hope that they will work it out that way then and really not involve the staff, because we've already rented out that field for someone else to use. And if someone else wants to use it, we really don't have the ability to say, go ahead, we have to say, talk to them, it's their field to use, they paid for it.
Right, and that, and that's kinda where we've been at, um, hopefully that conversation is occurring in, in there after, um, but that's our hope. And I would kinda try to say, hey, you guys, you do it together, the arts director did call both of them to say, you know, if you work it out, we'll be fine. You guys just work it out between yourself and we'll prep it in the morning, we'll have it ready, um, and send it to Ryan, go from there.
Great, thank you, so, did you have anything else, Councilman Laidbrake, did you have anything else?
I was gonna talk about the arts council, but we already did that.
Okay, Councilman Baird, you look through the floor, okay? And I, I already talked about the economic, one thing about the Economic Development Committee was, it was talked about that we possibly have a meeting on the nineteenth or, uh, invite. And I thought, uh, I was going to communicate, but have you done anything, cause I, my feeling has been this, go ahead.
He assigned me to prepare amazing stuff, but I don't have much information.
That's perfect, because, and I didn't give it to you on purpose, cause what I've done is I've talked to Strata, I've talked to Grave Todd, I've talked to, a little bit with Tyler Asmussen, I've talked to Jim Marshall at the city. Uh, I've talked to, I talked to Dave, uh, Brotherson quite a while back and they're all agreeable and on board with that. So I don't know if a big meeting would be in, in order yet, I still wanted, uh, time to talk to a few other entities to see if it's even a viable idea, if that's something that be. And all of them, uh, to this point have said, yes, we would love to participate and be a participant in that. And so I'd like to get their ideas, one on one, and then kinda refine it to where we have something to present.
To the economy?
Yes, to present to a group like that, so I think we're a little premature trying to have a meeting at that point. I'd still like to get ideas and thoughts put together, so that when we do have a meeting, it's a more, you know, more final type of thing that everybody has had something put in. But I think we can do that individually and not do that and then, I, I just feared that we were going to waste some people's time coming here and then really not having, does that make sense? So that's where that's at and, um, I, I have the college to talk to, I have, um, a few business, I wanted to talk to Rotary and a couple others. And just make sure that it was something that they thought was beneficial. And if that's the case, then I think we move forward and invite those entities and some of the pub, you know, or just have the public there and talking about that. If everyone's okay with that, that's kinda where I'm headed with that, so.
Sounds great.
That's all I have, uh, Councilman Baird.
Pretty much all the capital projects were covered, uh, except Stonegate, I believe, I, uh, which they started paving yesterday, was that right?
Yeah, it, all the infrastructure's done, uh, other than paving, the paving's the last we have left and they started, uh, my day paving. They had some problems with their hot light today and, uh, but they did get the first, um, portion of the, uh, the circle there, that's what I said.
But they already do the, the, uh, road mill type, which is seen in, prepped and ready for.
It's prepped, it's all prepped and ready for.
I wanted to see that, see how it turned out before they.
The, the, the farthest road to the south is, is paved and that, um, they'll come up to the cul-de-sacs as they, as they can and they'll bring it from the cul-de-sac to the street. And then they'll bring it into the, the street and so when they're done, they'll exit out and, and be done instead of having to run over themselves back over the asphalt with their equipment. They're working their way out and it should be done, uh, the hope is by the end of this week, in the middle of next, that'll put us completely two weeks early. Uh, we're on our current budget, but that current budget, as you recall, is eight hundred thousand dollars from forward than what the budget was when we were funding source. So we're eight hundred thousand dollars under budget and we're two weeks ahead of schedule.
I guess that's okay. That's awesome, that's awesome, well, good deal.
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't hear, but. Great, that's awesome. Joe, anything else?
I have.
Uh, Ryan?
I have just a few items, um, we, uh, we are working, as you can tell, to complete up as many projects as we can by the end of this one year. And we're on track to complete those with State Street, with Stonegate, with, um, Lagoon Street, uh, with our sidewalks on, on State Street, we've completed it. Uh, at least the city's portion, uh, there is a portion that needs to be completed by Burger King. Um, so we are making great progress towards finalizing those up. Just so you're aware, Merchant Matt and Tyler, uh, will be here next council meeting to discuss. I have also invited, uh, a firm, Louis, Louis and Young, uh, to come and do a presentation on taxi terminal financing and, um, on redevelopment, uh, agencies, um, sort of bring them in, uh, I've, I've contacted and have scoured the other city managers for ideas, um, to, to help me in this. Um, and that's been a good recommendation back to have them come, I've invited them, they'll give a twenty to thirty minute presentation at next council meeting, um, to kinda help. Give an idea of what they do and what items they can help us with, um, they, uh, they can create RDs or, it changed the name three times the last year or so. But, uh, they can create the district, they can help us with, uh, equal financing, those, those kinda things. So it'll be a good presentation, we're, I'm excited to have them come and, uh, watch, hear from them and ask the questions, so.
On the Economic Development Committee, we have to get their input on, because part of the function of that Economic Development Committee will be redevelopment. Having those tests that you're talking about and a few of those things, we wanna make sure that we have a structure to where that, we can incorporate that into, into that committee.
And that would be a great item to discuss when they come, so, you know, I'm, yeah, confident that, that asks this question and, and not knowing whether we can hold that, um, the other one, if we wanted to invite some, at least at this point, it gives a flavor towards economic development and they could at least, um, come and maybe, maybe have that instead of just the Economic Development Committee discussion, they could at least attend economic development items and they may be interested in the presentation wise. So, anyway, um, but either way, I think these would be great presentations and they're just working out to have come onto that pretty quickly, so. Just so happens works out that way. Most of the other things on my list, uh, have been talked about, um, just one item, uh, it has been talked about, the public, um, there had been an issue. And I'm sure you're probably all aware of it, I would just make sure that you are, um, there has been a sexy issue, uh, discussed in the high school. The, uh, the issue is being reviewed and active and looked at by our, our police force and our, uh, our attorneys. And as action happens there, it's minor, so we don't really talk about that, so the public talks about it, the churches have talked about it in different areas. We encourage people to, as, as families, um, to be able to protect their children from, uh, from, from things like this. At this point, you know, with involving a, a number of people, um, you know, we're not, uh, we're not releasing a lot of information to the public. But we wanna make sure that at least you are aware from, from the staff perspective, um, if they have, if you have specific questions as, as council or, or the public, you can contact the police chief or the city attorney, um, we have worked on a, um, public information notice, uh, just to kind of stand out for, um, guidance to, to say, here's some resources for the public, if parents want to have something that they can, um, can use, uh, to, to help. Know some information, not on the case per se, we're not, we're not talking the case, but in a bigger issue, just to help the parents have, um, some, some resource. And there's some out there, um, in our public information, she's, she's done a great job writing, but we'll just send that out. But there has been talk and we wanna make sure that, that, as transparency is transparent what we can be, we want to be. But sometimes there is a limitation to that transparency when it comes to the minors and youth of our, of our community. We want them protected, um, from those things, so in, in that light, to, to try to balance that, we wanna make sure that you're aware, um, if you haven't heard, we have to give, uh, what detail we can, but the best detail could be achieved, but please do consider it, so I just, wish you luck. Uh, other things we've talked about and, uh, covered quite a bit, one last item, just to, and Aaron was the one that brought it up and so, um, I would just bring it back to you, we had talked about the stop signs on six hundred East and Lagoon. Uh, it was discussed to have baby stop sign that had the lights around it. For each one of those signs specifically, they are just over fifteen hundred dollars a piece. My recommendation would be just to do the ones that would be on Lagoon Street, that would be the most traffic, um, instead of doing non-off for. I don't know that you can do the non-off for, um, and it'd be quite a bit more to do.
There's probably already a stop sign on the other ones.
What's that?
There's probably already a stop sign going the other way.
There's only one stop sign there coming in, six hundred east is a new road on, I think it might have added, I'd have to look, but there's not a lot of traffic currently, but there will be during school.
It's a new road and you know to stop there anyway, it's the ones that are on the main road that you're not used to stopping at would be the ones that.
Unless you, unless you told me to put four in, then that's exactly what you wanted, my recommendation would be to put, to put the two in that are on.
I think Dave, uh, uh, Councilman Baird would prefer, prefer all four, but.
Just kidding.
I, I don't want to take his, but I just wanted to bring that back, it was something we had discussed and bringing it back out of the way, just to.
I believe that was brought up by Aaron, he's up here, so we can.
But, wait, however.
So, um, say we can put a stoplight in there in the future, are those reusable, can we uninstall and put them in somewhere else?
Yeah, I think they would be, uh, depending on if they're worn out or how, how long the solar panel lasts and some of those same things. But we've reused other signs that, uh, when we had the hot lights put in on Highway forty, we reused those down at Cent, at Centennial there at ten eighty. That, that area on State Street, we reused those, those were reused, so I think it, I would expect so.
As we're talking about those, we approved that three-way stop sign up near your whole place?
Yes.
I've had a couple of patrons up there really thank the city for doing that, I had a brother that was way opposed and, uh, but others have been, just thought it was really good, so.
You know, speaking to that, I had, uh, somebody that lives up there also come to me and say, you know what, I really appreciate you putting that in. So, and at first I was like, are you, and I couldn't tell.
Maybe sarcastic.
And then he says, no, he says, I, I've seen so many people almost get in accidents there and it's been kind of a scary place and he says, it's, it makes perfect sense.
So that's, I just, that reminded me of that.
You would know you're previously right there.
It's so happy, it is so much easier.
Well, you can think, I'll, I'll tell you later who you can thank for bringing that up. I'll say, who wants to. I was about to say, who wants to?
And I don't have information that we need to totally, or section. Follow your next question. I just kind of.
I don't have anything either. Does anybody else have anything?
No.
Okay. If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.